Eric Alderetti. Phil Becerra.
Here.
Bruce Bauer.
Here.
James Gartner. Mark McLaughlin.
Here.
Beatrice Mendoza.
Here.
Lynette Verino. Mr. Vice Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. If everyone would rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll turn to the public comment portion of the meeting. Does a member of the public have any public comments on any non-agendized items? If so, you may fill out a request to speak form with the secretary, and after introduction, you'll have three minutes to speak unless an extension time is granted. All right, seeing none, we'll turn to the consent calendar. The first item of business is the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve items on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Do we state the absences? If this... Okay, with Commissioner Gardner, Verino, and Alderetti absent. Turn to the business calendar portion of the meeting. The next item is Commissioner Communication Disclosures. Do any Commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to items on the agenda tonight?
Mr. Vice Chair.
Commissioner Becerra?
I'd like to disclose that I spoke with Mr. Andy Quatch on October 4th regarding public hearing item number one.
All right.
I spoke to Andy Quatch today.
Commissioner Mendoza? And I also spoke to Andy Quatch last Thursday, and I also spoke to Tracy... I'm forgetting her last name. She spoke here, and I actually make a disclosure. She's my sister-in-law's sister. She spoke... I didn't recognize her at first, the last meeting, but I also spoke to her regarding the agendized item. Tran. Tracy Tran, I'm sorry. All right, now we will turn to the public hearing portion of the meeting. This is time and place for the public hearing on Agenda Item One for conditional use permit number 2016-29, conditional use permit 2016-30, and conditional use permit 2016-33. If you wish to address the planning commission, please fill out a request to speak form with the secretary. Comments are limited to three minutes unless an extension of time is granted. The action of the planning commission is final unless consent of the city council... Is final following consent of the city council unless, if allowed by the Santa Ana Municipal Code, an appeal to the city council is filed with the clerk of the council and a copy is sent to the planning department within ten days from the date of the commission's actions or unless set for public hearing by the city council. Staff will now make a presentation on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman of the evening here, and Commissioners. If you recall, this was an item that was presented to you about thirty days ago, about two meetings ago. It's the Majesty Restaurant. I'll kind of briefly go through an abbreviated version here and kind of tell you what we left off. Again, three CUP requests for the Majesty Restaurant, ABC expansion, after-hours, and banquet use proposals. And again, that's what that slide there says. Here's a site plan. The use is there in red tucked in the corner of the restaurant. And that's the whole site there. Again, it's part of a Santa Ana and Fountain Valley kind of development there. And this, again, this use is tucked in. It's about eleven thousand square feet, which are looking to go from eight thousand to eleven thousand square feet in size. And this is a floor plan that you saw last time as well. I circled where the exterior exit doors are. I'll get to that in a moment here and talk about a condition of approval that we've added on here, kind of address some of the concerns that were raised by this body thirty days ago. So let me kind of go through real quickly what... Just recap what I heard based upon that meeting. We continue to give staff time to get a couple of things together. One was some crime stats that were requested, more detailed crime stats. Those are in your report as Exhibit Seven, I believe, Exhibit Eight. So it was a more detailed breakdown. Same stats that I presented out to you last time, which just gives more information on time and address and more detail on the type of call. Again, fifty calls for service, none were attributed to this use over here. The other item that we did was get ahold of Commander Gominski because one of the discussions that were brought up was that there were some calls made to the police department about noise. And in fact, there were. We contacted Commander Gominski about the noise complaints. And he goes out and does a lot of neighborhood meetings and meets with people, and he gives them out their personal cellphone that works that phone. And he's gotten some calls in the past about some noise issues out there. Now, these calls aren't recorded in this crime data that you get. And Bill McGovern can give a little more detail on that. But essentially, he works with these neighborhoods and they call him directly. And he talks about some of the issues they're having, and a lot of the calls he's been getting was about noise. Some about the restaurant, some about the market next door, about the loading and noise going on. He's dispatched police cars out there, and when they get out there, there's usually nothing happening. It's the... Whatever issue was has been dispersed, gone. So they've never come back and had any type of issue or incident reported on the crime stats because it just hasn't been there. So those were two things that we heard from the last... I heard from the last meeting was follow-up on the calls and also cut to Commander Gominski to get a little more information about the details that he's gotten received. In response to some of the issues that were raised at the last meeting, I've added three conditions... Proposed to add three conditions of approval, and they're in the resolution here, the last page. One is posting a loitering sign back there. So if there is loitering happening, the police can go out there and cite them and get the loitering off the property. So that's new condition number nine. Condition number ten is the doors that we were talking about earlier, about those rear doors. Just close them. A lot of the issues that we got from the neighbors, a couple of calls I got was that noise is generated from the doors being open. And there's residences within close proximity there. On the right-hand side, which is on the east side, they're within fifteen feet of residences. Up on the north side, there may be a hundred feet from residences. So the proposed solution to address that noise concern is let's just keep those doors closed. Close those doors. And then the third one is they need to get the entertainment permit. Before we issue release to the ABC, get the entertainment permit, which has a bunch of conditions on there and requirements they have to comply with. There was one other item. I lost track of that for a second that was brought up at the meeting. Oh, yeah, was requested by this body to have a copy of the old CUP. And that's Exhibit Number Seven, I believe, inside here. Yes, Exhibit Seven in the staff report. And you can see all those conditions that were in that old CUP. Those have all been codified as part of the conditions of approval for ABC licenses or they're part of conditions of approval for the entertainment permit. So all those are still going to be addressed, which you saw back in ninety-seven are still being carried forward to today. So with that, we're staff recommending approval still of the request with these three new conditions. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. And the applicant again is here to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
First item, what was that again? Because you said to close the rear door, entertainment permit, and the old CUP. What was the first item that you had?
The first item was give more detailed crime stats. The fifty stats.
So I guess my question is not to you, but it's to Officer McGovern. The interesting thing about this is that the complaint that came up in the last meeting was noise. And, you know, Lieutenant... You know, Commander Gominski has witnessed the fact that there is noise because he's gotten calls on it. But nothing officially gets recorded, and so therefore, from a police perspective, we're looking at not a noise issue.
If a noise complaint comes in through dispatch on the phone, it's recorded.
Right, agree.
It's one of those fifty incidents.
No, I agree.
But there are incidents where he gets called directly. He may, you know, they may be at a neighborhood meeting and they're complaining about noise that occurred previously. So he's going to tell his people that work that area, patrol check, you know. So those things aren't going to get documented unless they actually see it happen. So that's why it would seem like there's less noise complaints than are logged.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just trying to think, is there a way we can help get around that a little bit and try to get more data into the police than... I mean, if I look at the police rating... The police rating for the location over the last fifteen years has not changed dramatically. I mean, I think it was a sixty-two... It's a sixty... It was a sixty-two back in nineteen ninety-seven, and now it's fifty-two. So there's not a significant change there. But yet, there's still people saying that there's a noise issue and a problem with respect to the later hours and the type of business that's being held at this point in time.
Unless they're going to call dispatch when they see this occurring, that's the only way it's going to get recorded on that
Right.
stat. So that's education. That's at the community meetings. He's also trying to be accommodating. They might be frustrated with dispatch, and they want to call the commander directly. They might want to email it in and get patrol checked, so...
I just think it'd be helpful if they're going to complain to Gominski, which makes total sense. I mean, he does a great job. What he does is that they still bring something to the police dispatch so that at least gets recorded, and at least we have better information, better details in the future.
I can certainly pass that along.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. This is for Vince. So the existing CUP from ninety-seven, if I understood it correctly, it allows... Or it allowed the business to conduct banquet operations, correct?
That's correct. It was a condition of approval that predated our requirement of having a CUP of banquet halls.
If you remember, do you remember around what time that requirement came into effect?
Early two thousands.
Okay, and this being from ninety-seven predates that by a couple of years.
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
Commissioner Mendoza?
My question has to do with the police call, which is a federal commission on behalf, or the patrol check. It says there's five. Is this because somebody called or is this a random check, neighborhood check?
It could be either. They just use generic terms, so it could have been an assignment from Commander Gominski that got logged in that regard. Or he might have assigned a disturbance call, which got logged under one close from the top. We have disturbing the peace, several calls for service there.
Anything else? Madam Secretary, have we received any written communications regarding this matter? All right, with that, then, the public hearing on this matter is now open. And I've received a request for a comment from a Tung Lee. Please come forward. And a reminder, you have three minutes to speak.
Hi, good evening. I was here last month and regarding this Majesty Restaurant. And again, I just want to recap that last month, Mr. Andy said there is two back door. One is in the kitchen and one is the emergency exit with alarm and soundproof to the door. But that's not true because on the exhibit B that Mr. Vince had with you guys showing that there is more than two back door. And on the double back door, double side door, there's no sound alarm, there's no soundproof. And you can see the disco light or the light dancing coming out of that at nighttime. And the concrete wall is just original from the builder, so there's no soundproof to that. So when they play loud music, the neighbor, especially we, right behind it, we can hear all of it. And also, Mr. Andy stated last week that it was for the wedding banquet that usually get real loud at midnight. But that's not true either because, I mean, I can show it to you guys that here is all the flyer or happened at the restaurant, and some of them, you can see it on the flyer itself, that they wait past midnight. They advertise on there from one o'clock, one a.m., twelve-thirty, one a.m., and more. And so we just want to leave this neighborhood as peace and quiet. For the last ten years, when Emerald Bay was there, we didn't have that much of a problem. So, and now you get... They're asking for the ABC license. It just, to me, that it just make it more attractive to a lot of, I would call it... Sorry, a lot of gangster and noise and drugs in the area because also last month, Mr. Vince pointed out in the same complex, there's a deja vu café in lounge. We have the same problem in Fountain Valley, Fountain Valley City, and they had to shut it down. So now, if we're going to bring this back and allow the restaurant to open at two in the morning with alcohol and all the noise, we won't have no peace in our neighborhood. So I really don't know how much the city will gain by allowing the restaurant to have all of this banquet alcohol to two in the morning. This does impact our neighborhood property and create a lot of nuisance. And again, I ask the city to take a look at it again. I have more evidence on the phone. If you want to see that the back door is open at night doing the performance of the concert. And so I don't know what's the definition of the banquet, but it's... They have concerts almost every night. Just September alone, you have four of them, and one of them just this Friday. So I don't understand what the restaurant keep on saying that they did take the precaution to not impact the neighborhood, but they does. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is... Is it Marie? I can't read this. It starts with a G. Marie Gallardo? Gallardo? Can't read it.
Does anybody speak Spanish?
Yes. Speaker's fine.
Commissioner Mendoza can translate. Yeah, you know what? If you don't mind...
She'll translate for you.
I stay here up here. If you could... Go ahead. If you could let her know, proceed. And tell her... Let her know she has three minutes to speak.
Dígame. Que es lo que tengo que contestar. Que es lo que tengo que contestar. Ah, este, el... Comisionado Bauer tiene una nota que usted quiere hablar. Sí, o sea, yo estaba... Yo estoy aquí por el soporte del restaurante. Yo tengo más de cuarenta y seis años viviendo en Santana. Yo no miro ningún problema. Porque toda mi familia, toda mi familia, mis amigos vamos a las bodas, a los banquetes, pero no hay ningún problema. Todo está bien. My friends and family go to the restaurants for weddings and other events. Sí, y no hay ningún problema. Es un soporte muy tranquilo, educación con respeto. Quiet area with lots of respect, an environment with a group of respect. ¿Algo más? No, esto.
And could I... You have her state or name for the record?
María Gallardo. María Gallardo.
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Mendoza. I think that was the first time we've had a Commissioner translate. The third speaker is Andy Quatch.
Hello, guys. Good evening, Commissioners and staff. I want to thank all of you first by me for being here on a holiday, Columbus Day, and I'm very surprised that we're working today. Initially, I'm here to... I've read all of the conditions of the staff approval, and we're very amenable to that. We agree with all the conditions. I just want to briefly respond to Mr. Lee's complaint. Just like the previous time he was here, like I already stated, the advertisement that were for concerts or events past midnight was mostly done by previous promoters. But since, within a year now, since we took it over and complied with the city, we have no events past midnight that I'm aware of. As far as the ABC license that he mentioned is concerned, I don't think that is before the commission because we already have an ABC license in place. And we're simply... We're here to expand a portion of the restaurant that was added about five years ago by the previous employer. As far as the four exits that were shown on the big screen, if we can show that screen again. If you... I want to just number them from one, two, three, from left to right. Door number one is to the annex, that we're... That portion that we're looking to expand the restaurant. That has been concreted through. We have, or at least bolted it, and we have casing and shelves. We do not use that whatsoever. Door number two is the only door that is open. It is alarmed, and it is soundproof. Door number three to the back where the corner meet there, that's no longer a door. That's been concreted out. And lastly, the doors that is feeding into the kitchen, that's for our delivery services. And that door remains... To remain unlocked during operation hours at night. And as I walked the neighborhood yesterday, I ran into Mr. Lee here and informed him, gave him our number. If there's any issues at all whatsoever, he can either call us or, now that I found out that he can call the commander directly, we're more than happy to resolve any issues that have come up. And in reaching out to the neighborhood yesterday, I actually walked the entire neighborhood of about fifteen, twenty homes that are immediately surrounded by the restaurant. I have a list here which shows people that supports our application and/or people that have absolutely no issues with our noise whatsoever. And these are not just within the five hundred-foot radius, but these are the residents immediately to our restaurant. So I'll submit that for your approval, along with their names, addresses, and phone numbers as well for your verification. With that, I'd like to yield the remainder of my time to answer any questions that the Commissions may have.
Commissioner Becerra?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. You had mentioned that, I guess, the recent management of the restaurant has happened within the last year?
Took over the restaurant, did about eighteen months ago, yes.
Okay, and the reason why I'm asking this is because the gentleman that spoke before you had shown us the flyers, and in the flyers, I noted that March 25th, April 15th, and July 1st all show promotions for one a.m. and May 6th for twelve-thirty a.m.
Yeah, but to the best of my knowledge, none of that was the case because when I started working in the restaurant, we immediately ceased our operations at about eleven forty-five and stopped serving at eleven thirty with announcement to the banquet facility that we are closing up at midnight, as well as people coming in to sign wedding contracts and stuff. We informed them that there'll be no more service after midnight.
Okay. I just... Again, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Sure.
That's my only question for the applicant.
I had a... Did you have a question?
Yes, I have a question about the doors. What time do you close the doors? Because I know...
What kind of what, ma'am?
What time do you close the doors? Because the gentleman that spoke before you said that the light goes toward the neighborhood.
I think he's referring to the back door light to one of the back doors, and I think he may be referring to the door, door number two. The other day, because we constantly check for soundproofing, and yesterday, I, as I walked the neighborhood, I also ran into the neighbor and informed him that we are working on soundproofing the door again because we want to make sure periodically we put it on... We put on some thicker foam. If there's any lights that are coming out of it, I would hope there's no. But if there is, and we don't know about it, or if, for whatever reason, it may gotten rotten out over time, which I'm not aware of, then we'll be more than happy to fix it, soundproof the doors. That's... Our intent is not to have that door or any other door in the back open. And the alignment of the parking lot kind of make it inconvenient for anybody to park back there because there is... Really, there's no ingress into the restaurant. If you park in the back, people will walk all the way around down to shopping center to get to our restaurant. So there's absolutely no reason for us to have any of those doors opened except for fire department requirements for exit purposes. It was up to me. I nail all for shutting, concreted out.
I had a question on those doors. You said you bolted a couple of those doors?
Yes.
When did you do that?
Door number one is to the annex.
And you're starting from the left?
Yes, the far left. The far left is... It's got a thick metal door. It's bolted in the back. It's bolted from the inside. We have shelving, thick shelving to display our supplies and things like that. So that door is not in use. And that particular door actually doesn't abut any neighborhood. It actually adjoins the supermarket. So it's kind of points out towards the street area. Door number two is a double door that's bolted and remained bolted, but it is an emergency exit. It is an emergency exit, so we keep it bolted in, and we have a two-by-four that can only be open from the inside for fire exit to come out, and that door is soundproof. Door number three has already been shut down over a year ago. It's concreted out completely, completely gone. And door number four, of course, is the kitchen delivery door. It is a single door, typically the size of a residential door.
I had a question of staff on those doors. I mean, because those... My concern is especially with a banquet facility this size, the fire safety concern, were those... Was this approved, the fire inspection? Was it done after these were sealed, before? When did that occur?
Yeah, when I did a permit search, there was no recent permits for any door closures on this property. It would be a concern to the building and fire department because you need a certain number of exits, you know, and they have to be a certain distance away from each other in case of activity. So this is new information, and it would be an issue. They'd have to come into building plan check to take that wall down between the suites, and at that time, they'll have to provide a current floor plan. Apparently, this is not current, current floor plan, and document that they still meet the building and fire codes, so...
Commissioner Becerra?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So we're calling that door number three. I took some pictures on my phone on my visit out there today. There's a door there. It's unconcreted over.
There's a door there, but to the inside, it's blocked out. We build wooden frames with insulation, and we concreted it in the back. I mean, if it needs to be reinstalled per fire code, we can definitely do that and keep the same insulation and do the soundproofing as well. But in the past, we have never had a deal with that door, and we just assume that that... Since that, you know, since that door abuts the neighbor, we assume it's closed.
And then door number two, you say you guys have it closed all the time. It's always... There's some sort of two-by-four, four-by-four or something?
Yeah, the only time it's open is probably in the daytime when the restaurant is completely vacant and the cleanup crew comes in just for air circulation. But other than that, it gets shut down because we have... In the past year, we have some break-ins, and that's one of the doors that they tried to pry in. So not only is there a latch, but we also have two-by-fours in there to initially wedge it and pull it in, if you will.
The reason why I'm asking is just because in my visit today, I saw that door wide open and it didn't look like there was, you know, any closing of it whatsoever. It wasn't like it opened and closed. It was just wide open. So again, mind you, it's during the day, so I get that, but you just... Because when you had said that you had it fortified essentially, I was thinking, you guys didn't do a good job today, then.
No, not door number two.
I saw it open today as well.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
There are two doors in the front, though, correct?
There are... There are two entrances to the door, yeah.
Yeah, they're back in... They're back in that area.
And then the main entry. Okay, so I mean, when considering all of this from a fire standpoint, we've got approximately four doors right now that are open, but we need to understand what the impact is from a fire department perspective because that's a big change.
Sure, yes, because they won't count all the doors in the front, for example, because if there's fire in front of the building, no one's going to rush all three doors. there's fire in front of the building, no one's going to rush all three, three doors, they're going to rush to the back opposite way, and that's why they need a certain number of doors open back there. It was like a diagonal distance, you have to be front, back sides, so.
But you lost a third of the doors, which is kind of concerning.
So Vince, on the, that question, I mean, let's say we were to approve the CUPs today. I mean, we all have concerns, I imagine, on that issue. Well, how would we handle that?
The building and fire department will handle it during plan check. They have to get the permit to remove that wall to expand it from 8,000, 11,000 square feet. At that time, the building and fire will analyze the plan, check the occupancy level, and determine how many exits and where they have to be.
All right. Very good.
So that is covered.
You use the term on the second door, which is the double door, as bolted also. You mentioned bolted. What are you referring to with respect to that?
Bolt, latch, latch is a push latch. There's two bolts which you can lock in from the...
Oh, bolt, you're talking about a, okay, you're talking about slide bolt.
And then there's two brackets that you put two bolts. We tripped the horse about that door.
So you did, so you have slide bolts, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Chair, I have one, one last question. So of these four doors, which one of them currently functions as an emergency exit?
Door number two.
Is it door number two?
Door number two and door number four.
Okay.
But door number four is through your kitchen?
It's through the kitchen, but the path is, there's exit signs that show the path of that. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, so with that, the public hearing on this matter is now closed. And I'll bring it back to the commission for a motion and/or comments. Commissioner Becerra.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I have no problem with the restaurant functioning. It's already been approved for a CUP back in 97. I have no issue with that. But I appreciate the neighbor coming out and informing the commission of what you're experiencing with the restaurant's function. And with that, I think for all of us, we don't want to be up here not allowing businesses to succeed, but at the same time, we need them to respect the existing neighborhoods around them. I'm not making a motion yet, but just kind of some thoughts that I have. I would actually like to take what staff has proposed, which I really appreciate what Vince has proposed. I think he really took some attention to what he heard from the last public hearing on this item and from what the community had expressed at the last hearing. But I'd like to take a couple things further. One, I'd like to possibly modify the condition regarding noise instead of having it not be audible beyond 20 feet, but rather it be five feet from the building, just because when I drove that site today along that eastern edge in the rear, I have a small car as it is, and I was feeling claustrophobic. So I can't imagine, you know, for the folks that have their rear doors, I'm sorry, their backyards adjacent to that property, what they may experience from a noise perspective. Excuse me. The other issue is in regards with the doors that we've exhausted, exhaustively talked a lot about today, I don't really believe there's any need for any parking in the rear of the property at all after 9:00, up until the, let's call it 7:00 a.m., when folks are getting up, going to school, or going to work. I just think having any parking back there would just cause another potential nuisance for the community. I'd like to actually make that area of the parking lot, no parking during nighttime hours, because I think the other businesses in the shopping center, as they go dark, you know, cell phone plays and a couple of the others, I think it'll allow for more parking in the front anyways. And the other idea would be just to really fortify the idea that the doors should be closed, they should not be open other than for emergency access, and no deliveries in case there is, for some reason, any deliveries between, let's see, just keep the deliveries, I'm sorry, between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., just so that, again, the noise, because I think the gentleman had mentioned that the market next door also creates a little bit of noise with their deliveries, but the market's not before us today, we've got Majesty before us. And so just to kind of try to do what we can to help the residents over there, those will be the conditions I would like to throw out to my colleagues.
Anyone else? Commissioner Rendosa?
Can I still ask a question?
Of staff or of...
If we approve free sell of alcohol, they're also asking to operate a tube, that means that they can sell alcohol to tube, or do they have to stop? I don't know. Like...
Per ABC, state law. State law would prohibit them from selling alcohol beyond 2:00 a.m. And I think what we're, what's before us, as staff can confirm, what we're, what's being asked of us is that they can operate their banquet facility until 2:00 a.m. So everything would be kind of at the same juncture. So you'd have alcohol service and the end of their events at 2:00 a.m.
Commissioner Becerra, I had a question on that first item that you discussed, what the five feet versus the...
Correct. In looking at the conditions on exhibit A and exhibit B, but just, they're pretty much the same language. So condition number five on exhibit A, the last sentence says, notwithstanding this requirement, music noise shall not be audible beyond 20 feet from the exterior of the premise in any direction. My recommendation would be to add 50 decibels, which is consistent with our city's noise ordinance, so that the condition would read, notwithstanding this requirement, music noise of 50 decibels shall not be audible beyond five feet from the exterior of the premises in any direction. And the reason I am throwing five feet out there, maybe it's 10 feet, but the idea being that along that eastern wall, it is so close to the building, and what the gentleman from the community has expressed is that he's got concerns about the noise coming out of the building. And I trust our building staff to really mitigate as far as anything in the building process from the tenant improvement standpoint, but at least this gives building a measuring stick as to what those tenant improvements need to accomplish.
I had a question of staff. If you don't mind, Vince, on that question, because you have the standard here, it says shall not be audible, which is, seems pretty low standard. Is it, is, would it incorporate the city standard, that 50 decibel standard?
This one, this one says it's not audible at all, so it's like a zero standard. So it's basically giving the neighbors peace and quiet. Everything's got to be contained inside, doors closed, music low.
Okay, so that's actually a higher standard.
Well, no, then I apologize. So let me ask you this then. So I like where you're going with it. So I guess if you're trying to measure whether they're in compliance with the noise ordinance, so you're saying if someone went out there to measure, they literally could not, they would not be able to hear anything?
That's correct. That's correct. Under this, under this current condition, right. Not just easier for us because the police is very limited on going out there and doing measurements. We don't have the manpower to do it essentially. So the standard is, you drive by, hear anything, you're in violation.
Well, then, I will just say to my colleagues, I would strike the proposal of the 50 decibels, but I would still at least keep the five feet in there, just to say that we don't want to hear it outside.
Yeah. I think that would be great for the neighbors to know that they, they hear anything, it's an issue.
Okay. No, thank you for that clarification. I definitely wasn't trying to relax it, so thank you.
Anyone else? And then with that, do we have a motion?
Mr. Vice Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving conditional use permits number 2016-29, 2016-30, and 2016-33 with the following amendments to the conditions of approval. In relation to the live entertainment condition, that we change the number 20 feet to five feet, and that the next condition regarding no loitering signage, I would also like to add no parking signage between the hours of 9:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. And on the condition regarding the rear doors of the restaurant, I would like to add the rear north and east restaurant doors, and that they only accommodate deliveries between the times of 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Rendosa, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion passes unanimously with Commissioners Gartner, Alderetti, and Verino absent. All right, absences. Do we have a motion to excuse the absences of Commissioners Gartner, Verino, and Alderetti?
Motion approved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, aye. Motion carries unanimously with Commissioners, I noted, absent. Staff member comments? Are there any staff member comments?
First off, I'd like to, you all got today a handout about this screening of Urbanized, and this is in, is part of an award ceremony. The City of Santa Ana, downtown Santa Ana, won a national award from our, the American Planning Association for the documents and the actual improvements that have happened in downtown Santa Ana as a result of the transit order and zoning code and some of the other actions that you and your predecessors have taken, and the city council and their predecessors have taken to make Santa Ana a better place. So it's really exciting. So if you can come, please do, it's free. You may be, you will be contacted again, but this is kind of a save the date kind of thing. The second thing, we are inviting all of you to attend as our guests, the Grow Conference. I have heard from some of you, all of you, are you coming too as well?
Well, I, I'm already...
Oh, you're already there? Okay. So I have at least three members that are here, as well as Commissioner Gartner has expressed an interest in going, so that's great. We want to have as much attendance as possible. In addition to that, I do not have an update on the PD statistics, but I will ask again, so. And that concludes my response.
Planning Commission comments? I mean, comments from the commissioners? Commissioner?
Commissioner Becerra.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Well, I just wanted to say out loud, I want to wish our founder, Mr. William Spurgeon, a happy 187th birthday today, just happens to be...
Is he still alive?
I don't know, his clock tower's there. We'll find out. Just wanted to do that. And I also want to, actually, you know, what staff brought to our attention, the APA award came from a gentleman who serves on another commission, our Arts Commission, and he comes from Award One, Lisandro. I just want to publicly acknowledge him and thank him for submitting the nomination to the American Planning Association, and obviously want to thank the APA for selecting downtown Santa Ana as a great neighborhood. With that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner comments? Commissioner Rendosa, Commissioner McGlaughlin? I don't have any. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.